My colleague said something about that. I will speak for the three part ones.
Okay, we're on it.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody's happy now. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here in City Hall. The summer 9th, 2019 City Council meeting and the full City Council come to order. It's 2:00. I'm Bruce Harrell, President of the Council. The Clerk, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Here.
President Harrell.
Here.
Eighth present.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll move to adopt the introduction referral calendar. We have several changes, so let's go a little slowly and make sure we do it correctly. I do want to say before we do that, I really want to thank the City Clerk's office, and in particular Amelia Sanchez and Jody for all your work on a Friday, late Fridays and over the weekends, hopefully not too much over the weekends, but particularly it gets crazy on Monday, and you all are just the consummate professionals making our jobs easier. Thank you very much, and I want you to know, we all, nine of us appreciate that very much. So having said that, let's hope your work pays off in dividends here as we try to get through this. So, are there amendments to the introduction referral calendar? I believe Councilmember Backshaw has one.
Yes, I have two. Thank you. And I'd like to move to amend the proposed introduction and referral calendar by introducing Council Appointment 1529 entitled "Reappointment of Christine Vaughn as Member Pike Place Market Historical Commission for a Term to December 1st, 2020," and by referring it to the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee, which is meeting this Wednesday.
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second it to amend the IRC to add this appointment. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It is amended in that manner. And Councilmember Backshaw, well, actually, I'll move this. I'll move to, first of all, suspend the rules, the council rules, to allow consideration of Council Bill 119725. I'll read how that is described. If there is no objection, the rule that I'm using states, "If there is no objection, the council rule related to the circulation of a council bill for introduction by 5:00 PM on the preceding business day will be suspended." And then I'll say, "Hearing no objection, council rule is suspended." So what I'm asking you to do is, we just got this one package in on Council Bill 119725 late, it just didn't come in by Friday, and so it came in and we're going to refer this to the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee. It has to do with a salary brand for a particular position within the city. So, having said that, I'm suspending the rules to allow consideration of this, and having done that, Councilmember Backshaw, you want to say anything more about the bill?
Just that I would move to amend our introduction and referral calendar by introducing Council Bill 119725 entitled "An Ordinance Relating to City Employment: Creating a Compensation Program for the Position of Chief Technology Officer," and by referring it to the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee this Wednesday, and this was a request by the Mayor's Office.
Okay, and again, we missed the deadline, but we can get that referred. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the, was the amendment seconded? I didn't hear a second.
Councilmember Gonzalez would love to second it.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilmember Herbold, I believe you may have an amendment as well.
Indeed, I do. Thank you. I move to amend the proposed introduction referral calendar by introducing Appointment 1530 entitled "Appointment of Igiza Michael as Member of the Seattle Arts Commission for Term to December 31st, 2021," and by referring it to the Civil Rights, Utilities, Economic Development, and Arts Committee.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of amending the IRC for this appointment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And Councilmember Sawant, I believe you have a change as well.
Thank you, President Harrell. I move to amend the proposed introduction and referral calendar by introducing a council bill entitled "An Ordinance Relating to Termination of Residential Rental Tenancies: Prohibiting Evictions in Winter Months," and amending Section 22206160 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and by referring it to the City Council.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second it to put the ordinance as described by Councilmember Sawant on the IRC. Any questions or comments?
Can I just quickly, just sort of go through a description of it?
Sure.
Is that okay? Thank you. Thank you, President Harrell and City Council.
You had the votes, by the way.
I know, I know. I just, I just want to make sure the members of the public are also involved in it. I know we discussed at the briefing already. I wanted to make sure to welcome all the activists here and community members who were part of our community fight to not allow Northlake Tiny House Village from, to be evicted, so we succeeded in that. And we should keep in mind, this happened because both our homeless neighbors and our house neighbors, we stood in solidarity against this kind of eviction because we agreed that it makes no sense whatsoever to evict our homeless neighbors at a time when the crisis is so unprecedented, and also as we head into winter. And so it was because of our community action and because 2,000 community members signed the petition in like 30 hours that the mayor was forced to back down. And in the wake of that, the questions about evictions, especially in the harshest months of the year, have come to the fore, and I wanted to thank the City of Seattle Renters Commission, who earlier in November sent a letter urging the City Council to take action in line with the city's homelessness state of emergency by passing, by pausing all evictions effective immediately and to continue a moratorium on evictions through the end of winter. And we see why this is so important. We've seen the crisis in our city and region itself, but according to the National Coalition for Homelessness, 700 people experiencing homelessness die annually from effects of hypothermia in U.S. cities.
Go on.
And as the Renters Commission says, that when you look at the Seattle situation, the Seattle temperatures regularly fall into the 30s overnight, and according to All Home King County's Countess in a report for 2019, 41% of homeless neighbors sleep outside every night with an additional 19% sleeping in vehicles. Neither of these situations provide much protection from the elements, and both can be deadly. And we know 191 homeless individuals died last year, 57% died outdoors in a vehicle or an encampment. And while this particular study does not, cannot definitively point out, just because of the way the statistical study was done, that it was precisely because of exposure to the elements and hypothermia that lives were lost, but we know that hypothermia and exposure to the elements in the winter is a big component of why conditions are worsened, health is worsened, and then leads to loss of human life, which is the most brutal thing that's happening in our city. And so that's why it's important that we do this. I just wanted to share also that there's no law, there's no city or state in the U.S. where such a law exists. So if we do end up passing this, it will be another first for, you know, Seattle would be leading the way. And we are modeling our law on the basis of what we already have in France. In France, housing is treated as a human right, and so tenants have real protection against being evicted in the winter. And we have several questions to be answered, and my office is working with central staff and the Law Department to get those questions answered, because we know every renter's rights we pass, the corporate real estate lobby takes to court. So we want to make sure that we are passing a foolproof legislation, and I discussed with my colleagues this morning, and we will be having that discussion. I don't want any overdue delays, but I want to make sure all the questions are answered, and we do a thorough job before passing this legislation. I wanted to thank everybody who has come today. Let's keep fighting, and let's make sure that at the earliest possible date when our questions are answered, we have a discussion on this in committee, and we put this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Sawant, the last thing you said in your remarks, I just want to make sure I'm following you, this is a referral to the full council. When you said any discussion in the committee, you mean any discussion on the council, because this is not going to committee, correct?
It's, it may or may not. I'm, in the motion, I did not specify a date of full council, so I didn't say it should be voted.
I see.
So it's possible that based on the input we get from the Law Department, we may have a committee meeting in early January and then put it to a vote.
I understand. Thank you very much. Let me see the motion. So I thought this was a motion on the IRC to refer this to the full council next Monday. Is that, I'm wrong?
It's just to the City Council. The City Council.
Got it. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, it's been moved, and I believe it was seconded, correct? So any other comments on the IRC, on this issue? Councilmember Herbold?
Just a clarification. Did we not receive something earlier that said that this was coming to full council next Monday? I, just the fact that you thought that and I thought that.
I can clarify that. Yes, that was our original thinking, and I would like nothing better than to do that, but I think we have an indication from the Law Department that they would like to address some concerns, and I don't know at this moment that this can be done in a week's time, so I just want to be careful.
Thank you.
Appreciate that cautiousness, and appreciate your leadership on this issue, and appreciate the strong community support for trying to stop quite candidly winter evictions. So thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And I believe that takes us, takes us through the IRC. So all those in favor of adopting the introduction referral calendar as amended, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Still voting, Councilmember Brad? I didn't hear anything from you. Opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Okay.
No kidding.
Not aware of any amendments to the proposed agenda, so if there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. The minutes of the November 18th, 2019 City Council meeting have been reviewed, and if there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Do I have the minutes? Okay. The minutes will be signed at some point when I have them. See, you could have fun like this, we know we're going to have to go here. I don't have even the minutes signed this first time that happened. Oh, presentation, I don't believe we have any presentations this afternoon, so this time we'll take public comment on the fine people that have come here to talk about things that appeared on today's agenda, or our introduction referral calendar, or our 2019 work program. Now, if you're here to discuss Item 1, Council Bill 119696 relating to a moratorium extension on mobile park homes, that discussion and public hearing will occur separately and shortly after this public comment period, so hold tight on that. We'll have a special hearing on that, okay? So having said that, and if you come and I call your name and say you're talking about that issue I just described, and we'll, I'll note that, and we'll hold you over for the other hearing. Having said that, David Haynes, you are first, sir, and you will be followed by John Manella, and then Annette, Annette, I think it's Kiep Kapstein or something like that, I'm sorry. Okay. Not too bad. We need a moratorium on kicking out the homeless in shelters at the coldest part of the morning. They don't get hot water, oatmeal, showers, laundry, any semblance of outreach or resource, with nowhere to go for hours. The people voted against anti-homeless policies, yet City Council doesn't help solve the subhuman mistreating shelters that pad the books, create jobs for government and non-government, that allows shady donors within non-provides to get away with getting rich, pocketing a majority of the money for six-figure salaries to buy off City Council. The mayor and activist uses lobbyists to negotiate away the rights of innocent homeless forsaken. There is already 385 people dead in the last two years, I think, because they were forsaken to the streets with no housing, no proper shelter, no qualified outreach, and the exemption of drug pushers. Yet City Council cares more about taking names and phone numbers of renters while never writing any law to end the abuse of overpriced, dilapidated rentals. It's obvious City Council only cares for Sheran Lee and other executives of the homeless industrial complex. Just look at Nicholsville, tiny slum village. They are forced to pay $27,000 for some sort of like expenses for a non-residential zoned area. Now, it's totally offensive that the Renters Commission is using the oppressive plight of the homeless to justify them never being evicted while copycatting Paris, France policies to do it. This ain't Paris, people. This isn't even close to Paris, but you all are copying the obscurities of elsewhere, and the whole time you're using the homeless as the excuse, but you're not doing anything for the homeless. You're only doing things for the six-figure salaries that finance all the activists who helped get you reelected. As long as you cover the reelection apparatus, you don't give a crap about the homeless. Maybe there is too much conflict of interest to have the same City Council overseeing the homeless industry and getting distracted going out of the way for renters. When is the City Council going to solve the dishonest efforts of the homeless industrial complex who still haven't helped the 12,000 houseless who are discriminated against while hypocrites in the city? Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Who think they're entitled to not pay the rent in the winter? Because look how bad the City Council, government mistreats the homeless. Thank you for ending. John will be followed by Annette.
Well, thank you, City Council and fellow people of Seattle. My name is John Manella, and I am a board member of the Tenants Union of Washington, and I'm going to be real brief. We fully support a moratorium on kicking people out in the middle of winter. This is ridiculous. It's ridiculous. This is one of those things that seems so obvious once you hear it, that it's a shock as to why we allow people to get kicked out in the middle of winter at all. Why have we been doing this? When 90% of evictions result in being homelessness, or result in homelessness, and you're doing this during the winter, that's a death sentence for people. And the City Council needs to support this moratorium. We need to stop kicking people out in the middle of winter. It's just so, it's so obvious that I can't, I can't even, I just, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Hey, John. Annette will be followed by Emily McArthur, and then Violet Lavatay.
Okay, is this one on?
Yes, it should be.
I'm kind of short, so that one looks too tall. I'm Annette Klapstein, and I'm here also to add my support to the moratorium on winter evictions. It seems to me that not kicking our most vulnerable, poor neighbors out in the middle of winter is kind of the bottom line of what it takes to be a decent human being, and if anybody would even think about voting against that moratorium, I would point out that it's the holiday season, and maybe in light of the usual play that Act Theater puts on, you can expect a visit from three spirits. But anybody who would think about this, I think, would be even less likely to be redeemed than Ebenezer Scrooge. So this is just, you know, basic human decency to not throw people out, people who are struggling financially, who are at the bottom of the barrel, our neighbors who are most poor and vulnerable, let's protect them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily McArthur. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm excited to see the crowd here today, and I think, I just want to say very clearly, I support Councilmember Sawant's proposal to place a moratorium on winter evictions. I think there's a lot of precedence for this, not only the law that's been cited in France of housing being a human right, but where I went to college in Boston, it's illegal to turn off people's heat in the winter. It's a basic understanding that without shelter, without warmth, people die. And I've stood before this council many times, talking about the number of people who die, it goes up and up, and sadly feel like maybe this council doesn't care about that number, but I know the people in this community do, about the 191 people who died in the streets in our city last year. And I, for one, don't want to be part of that anymore, and I think we know that evictions are faced disproportionately by women, by people of color. We know that the homeless community is disproportionately LGBTQ, and I think we can actually be an equitable city that addresses these things that we claim to care about by passing this very common sense legislation. The City Council had a chance to address the affordable housing crisis last year with the Amazon tax. The vast majority of you still sitting here today, except for Shama and Teresa Musqueta, and I know there's Alex Peterson as a new face, so I hope that he'll take the right side going forward, but they bent to the will of Amazon and repealed it, and we'll be fighting again for the Amazon tax. Let's address part of the worst consequences of the council's inaction by passing this lifesaving legislation to stop winter evictions.
You said my name right.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you. I'm Violet Lavatay. I'm an advocate for the Tenants Union of Washington. I'm here today because our deputy director dropped me off here because I would be at our clinic right now, helping people. Our job at the Tenants Union is to keep people in their homes. With this, this legislation, it would help a lot of people who are already going to the streets. We've seen it. Our job at the Tenants Union is to prevent that. We can't do anything more if the judge so orders it. Tenants Union can't go against that. Once the judge orders it, the people are on the streets. I'm here to testify on some of the families who are already on the streets, and our job today, I hope, our job today, to think about our neighbors and to say, who can I help and who can I save that is getting ready to go to the streets? That's why I'm here today, because I seen it firsthand. Every family that we help save, it's, it's saying, we can go home and say, this family can still be in their bed. I'm sometimes guilty going to a bed at night while some of our neighbors are going to the streets. I am pleading with you to pass legislation that will help everybody in this city. The City of Seattle has too many people on the streets. This legislation will stop it because the winter is cold. I'm worried, I'm all geared up. Now, just imagine the people on the streets that have just this and are in the cold every minute of the day. So what I think is, everybody here is asking you and pleading with you to do the right thing, to change things up in our legislation to help more people in these winter months. Thank you.
Thank you, Violet. So the next, next three speakers, Barbara Finney, then Kabibi Monet, and then Gabriela Duncan, and then Devon Silvernail. Barbara, Kabibi, Gabriela, Devon, in that order. Is Barbara here?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, Council. My name is Barbara Finney. I live in District 5, and I'm a retired registered nurse. We need to stop the winter evictions now. According to the National Coalition for Homelessness, 700 people experiencing homelessness die annually from the effects of hypothermia in the U.S. cities, and there, we need to, we need to go the other way and provide more housing, and stopping evictions all year, but especially now, is something we have to do, you have to do, please. Women and people of color are disproportionately face eviction, and people who face, who go through eviction too often wind up homeless. The Seattle Renters Commission has called for a moratorium on evictions during the winter. I salute Chair Devon Silvernail and the Commission. Councilmember Shama Sawant has shown great leadership by taking up the call for a winter eviction moratorium. I ask you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for having a heart. I've been here a few times, and I've seen that your compassion is really shining through, and we all appreciate you very much for all you're doing. My name is Kabibi Monet, as I've said before in other hearings. I'm the executive director of New Black Arts West Theater, and a lot of what I do when I come up here is either read something that is poignant to what we're talking about, or things that I have written myself. This is something that I have written. Let's put an end to homelessness now, not later. In the spirit of Kwanzaa, remember our history and work towards a better future for our children. May you feel the desire to unify your communities, share your wealth, large or small, keep it in our neighborhoods, have purpose in life, use your creativity to encourage and uplift others. Think of the joy you could bring to some elder, to their lives, by just spending a little time with them. Talking with or listening to a lonely person, a simple thing, but such a powerful weapon for eliminating loneliness. Yes, they are homeless, we are a homeless community, but that doesn't mean that we aren't glad and happy to be alive. And yes, we are without a lot, but what we do have is a whole lot of love for each other. We have found a way out of no way with the help and strength of our Creator. One thing that we have found in our homelessness, our homeless condition, is that we're a family, the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's not the house that you live in, but the home in your heart. Let's end homelessness now. Let's set the example to the world that we have humanity, and that we love each other, and that we can be real sisters and brothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kabibi. Gabriela, followed by Devon.
Hi there. I have a profitless nonprofit called Change Homelessness.
It bends down, Gabriela. You can bend the microphone down if you like. There you go.
And I also have a daughter on the streets here. This is very difficult for me because I got to share the dirt, because people are sleeping. They're warm, and they're comfortable, and they're not paying attention. And people that are on the streets really do matter. What we do with people on the streets matters to the rest of us because it is an energy, and it permeates. And my story's pretty ugly. And if I could show you the sores all over my daughter's body from the drugs that are raging through our streets, if I could tell you how many times I've been to a counselor and a therapist, and I am one, at Harborview, and asked for help, and then they never follow through in time, I'm fortunate because someone houses me, but it is not all the time spent working in the Albuquerque Public Schools, or my time as a treatment foster parent, realizing that these children out here on the streets are nothing more than treatment foster children now, in a different light, in a different time. Hungry, angry, lonely, tired, all the time, even if you have a car. And if you had to look at that in physical form, when that person looks just like you, you wouldn't even think of evicting people in the middle of winter. What is wrong with this picture, and what is wrong with us? We have to love people because they're not feeling very lovable themselves, trust me. That's exactly what it feels like, no matter what training you have. I have probably just as much as education as everybody here, and my training comes from therapeutic crisis intervention at Cornell University, and I'm quite certain this picture is really out of kilter. And these people need to stay somewhere, stay put until it's warm enough to be kicked out of everywhere else they roam. And I appreciate those of you who are here and who know what that battle is like. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriela. Do I have Devon, followed by Sean Smith, and then Alicia Roberts?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Devon Silvernail. I'm co-chair of the Seattle Renters Commission, here speaking in personal capacity. You already know our position at the Renters Commission. And I'm here, Barbara kind of pointed me out, but this recommendation comes from everybody on the Commission, not just me. It comes from my co-chair, Jessica Westgren, as well, and the 14 other members that are on our Commission, some of whom have been homeless ourselves or housed us ourselves. And we brought this forward because we believe it's common sense. You know, I can personally say for myself, you know, I see the law that's been in effect in France for the last 70-ish years almost, and I see... in France for the last 70-ish years, almost, and I see a humane, just law, something that can help people stay alive. You know, too many people end up on the street and can't last. You know, that's a really harsh existence when you're living outside. And I would love to see the city council and the city of Seattle do something that isn't novel, it's not new, it's not big and scary, something that can really help save lives. And I think that we have the power to do that right now and going forward. I'd like to thank Councilmember Sawant for bringing this up to the council so quickly as well, and for responding to the Renters Commission directly about this. I don't think we received anything from any other offices, but hey, you know, no biggie if you can help get this going. Because again, it doesn't really matter whether or not you've talked to us in private about whether you like it. It really is about if you support something like this, and you want to support your neighbors and keep people housed, and keep people from dying on the street. So thank you so much, and we'll be talking soon, I'm sure. Have a good one.
Thank you. So Sean Smith, and then Alisha Roberts, and Travis Johnson.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Sean Smith. I'm a resident of Nicholsville Northlake Village. There was once a young lady who stood before me, and she said, it was the middle of January, and she had spent a little too much money for Christmas for her children. And she was evicted from her home. And her and her children, and the secondhand clothes that they owned, had to spend the remainder of that winter in their vehicle. And I'm sorry to say that that was not the first time that I had heard that story. I've heard that story hundreds of times. We literally need to do something more to prevent the insanity of evicting people in the middle of winter. This is the right thing to do. Let's get it done.
I'm Alisha Roberts, and I live at Nicholsville Northlake. In light of what just happened, that we just went through, I would really ask that you guys consider this proposal. It's definitely needed. Most people that do face eviction, it's for a month's rent or less. And that just seems like not a lot of money to be kicked out during the winter months. So please support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alisha. Following Travis, will be Greg Calucci, and then Rui Martin.
Thank you for having me. My name is Travis Johnson, and I'm a Nickelodeon. I'd like to personally say thank you for having me, City Council. I'd also like to thank Councilman Savant for sticking up for us little guys like she The middle of winter in Seattle is one of the harshest things I've ever experienced. I remember being in a tent, and I remember the rain coming down so hard that my tent was flying down the street. It was a sad day. As part of Nicholsville, I am. We support Savant and the end of winter evictions. No one in Seattle should have to be evicted in the middle of winter. Trust me, it's not fun. I'm trying not to cry up here. I really am. Thank you, Savant, for doing this. You always stick up for us little people. And by the way, I'm a Republican, and I voted for you. Have a great day.
Following Greg was Rui Martin, and then Mark Watson. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. I live in District 3, and I'm honored to have Shama as my council representative. I fully support this proposal. As others have said, it's just heartless to evict people into the streets. And also, I would like people to remember that this does include families as well. And so it's children that have no direct responsibility for where they end up. And so this proposal would help stop that scenario as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to speak today. I'd like to rephrase a question that was presented by one of our local media outlets a few months ago. Is Seattle lying when it comes to dealing with homelessness and a homeless crisis at this present time? I would like to thank Councilmember Sawant for proposing the moratorium, because this should not be something we should have to ask. This should be outright taken up right now. People are people, irregardless of how much money they have in the bank, how much income they have when it comes to owning a home, owning an apartment, or should I should say, owning a condo, renting an apartment. This should not be something we have to bring before the city council, or a member of the council has to say, this is wrong, let's do something different. At the present time, in the last three years, over 100 people a year have died on the streets considered houseless or homeless. In a so-called world-class city, this is not right. This is not something that we should be proud of about our community. In fact, to me, it seems like we are a classless system. That means a city without class. The next question I would like to ask is, how can we consider ourselves being good citizens if we see somebody down the street in a tent without saying, is there anything I can do to help you out? I live on the edge of Madrona, and last week, someone in one of the local blogs asked the question, what can we do with the homeless people that are in the arboretum? My answer would be, help them out. Thank you for allowing me to have the time to speak.
So we have about 12 more speakers. We have gone beyond our 20-minute period. If there's no objection, I'll extend the session to at least have these last folks sign up, who've signed up, speak. So hearing objections, 2:42, we're four minutes beyond the 20 minutes. We'll extend it. So let's keep going with Mark Watson, then Zach, is it Laiak, Leach, and then Jonathan Reiser.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Mark Watson. I am a union rep with ASME Council 2.
And I am Sean Danik. I'm also a union rep with Protec 17.
And we're here to speak on the contracts that you'll be voting on today, and we just wanted to ask for your support in voting yes on those contracts. We spent over a year plus negotiating with the city, and we wanted to first thank the mayor's office and the council. I know as your involvement was helpful going through this process. We think these are strong contracts that will help with the affordability crisis with the folks that you employ. This covers, I don't know, probably around 5,000 folks that work for the city, everything from engineers to the janitors that clean this building every day. So again, we just wanted to thank you for that. There's some important, we think we've made improvements in many areas, including issues around fairness when it comes to discipline, language premium for the first time in this city, which is a really important equity issue. We have a work-life committee that we're, there's part of this contract we're gonna start talking about, an important issue that I know the council is interested in, which is dependent care costs, and how we can help your employees with that struggle in this city. So just wanted to thank you again for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So we got Zach Lynch, and then Jonathan Reiser, and then Imogen Williams.
Hi there. My name is Zach Lynch, and I am a chemical dependency counselor and a master of social work student. I'm here to express my general distaste for sweeps. Plainly put, they're sick, especially in winter. Preventing evictions and engaging in other prevention methods, which Seattle does not tend to make use of, instead of responding once problems become crises, which is not anyone's fault but all of our problem, could build a better infrastructure for relief. But I want to be clear that, in my opinion, bold action will be needed to prevent this city and its workforce from crumbling. The city has changed very rapidly, even in the seven years I've lived here. Centrism, incrementalism, and more neoliberalism will not help us. We really need to start doing things differently. Business as usual will continue to erode our ability to respond substantively and with any sort of justice. How we handle this really matters. Aggressive, hateful vigilante responses to the housing crisis are continuing to build, and it is an issue of public safety to take bold action fast and with a sense of compassion in place of punitiveness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm an organizer, I'm Jonathan. I support Councilmember Sawant's proposal to place a moratorium on winter evictions. I'm an organizer with B Seattle for the Tenants Rights Boot Camp. Since I'm a tenant, like most people in this city, and have been a tenant for a long time, it feels great to help people learn the lessons that I had to the hard way. You don't have to live in dangerous subcar living conditions, accept illegal charges and fees, and a whole litany of other abuses from landlords who own the home that shelters you. And one thing that renters, especially the poorest renters, don't have is time. Time to find out what's actually legal, to talk to your neighbors about how to exercise your rights as renters, to access city resources that are supposed to address these problems, but that people don't have time to access in their stressful lives. This moratorium on winter evictions is a gift of time, time that will prevent people from facing winter conditions that will realistically result in death, or at least sickness and suffering on the part of the evicted. So people go on and on about how homelessness in Seattle is this cruel problem that's unfortunately just too hard to figure out. But at the very least, almost 90% of evictions lead to homelessness. And so at the very, very least, we can prevent these during the winter seasons where people are just gonna die on the streets. And that's it. Support it.
Thank you. As Imogen makes her way to the mic, she'll be followed by Erin Schlossman, and then Griffin Silver. So after Imogen, it'll be Erin and Griffin.
On Sunday, it was announced that Epiphany Church is accepting a new family and sanctuary to protect them from deportation. That is the spirit of this place. Every person matters. Every person has a contribution, unless they're shivering on the sidewalk. But that is the spirit, that is the spirit of our place. Every person matters. An hour ago, I was at assisted living, I visit my son's professor, take him to walk. And I said, I'm going down to city council to stop evictions in winter. And they're so proud of me. And I said, no, this is the work of Shama Sawant, our council member. And I've been part of that community for a while, and nobody says, who? This is the right thing to do. It will save lives, and we all hope it will be unanimous. Thank you very much.
My name's Erin Schlossman, and I'm in huge support of the moratorium on winter sweeps. The sweeps don't affect me directly. I'm a UW graduate. I have full-time, gainful employment, and I'm still one bad accident away from losing my housing as a renter. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for spearheading this action. I think it benefits the entire community. It is an issue of human rights here, and we all have the direct responsibility and the direct capability to do something good about it. So thank you.
So following Griffin, who will be our next speaker, will be Eliana Scott-Tornis, and then Gina Owens.
So I come from Tacoma, where people who formerly resided in Peoples Park have been dying on the streets for the last eight days. I'm a type 1 diabetic. One month without insurance means I'm on the street, and I'll be next. This is a poem, if you will. It's called "Municipal Murder." He falls asleep against the lamppost, six fingers to his name, down from 9th and November. He has a stash off of 9th and Yakima at Wright Park, and in the bottom of his grave. He navigates the sirens, the lights flicker like an edge parting flesh. There's no place for him, but to the overseer, he leaves his mark. Only Midas knows how we deserve our poverty. Only Calgary knows how the damned bleed. And only Congress knows how addiction slithers, how their home translates to trash heap, and how life is a privilege not easily afforded. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Eliana Scott-Tornis. I'm chair of the Othello Village Community Advisory Committee. And before I talk about the evictions, I want to thank those of you who helped support Northlake Village. It was amazing yesterday to be at the celebration at the village instead of a preparation for a tragedy. So I know there's some of you who very publicly have spoken out and gave a space for the amazing community support to be heard. And I know there are those of you who've worked behind the scenes to make sure that some of those necessary meetings happened. So thank you. This is, this is real to me, very connected. I was speaking at a Jewish teens group on Sunday, talking to them about the work I do supporting my homeless neighbors. And one of the kids said to me, he said, you know, excuse me, you know, if you're talking about this, all these issues with regular, ordinary people, our teachers, our nurses, our bus drivers, being able to afford housing, and you're sharing with us how hard it is to get back into housing after being homeless, shouldn't we be doing things to help prevent people from falling into homelessness? I said, this is beautiful. He said, they saw it right like that, these kids who knew so little about it. And so I told them about the work that the council has done, the amazing work in this last budget season, to try to get more legal representation for tenants to help prevent evictions. And at some point, as one of the kids pointed out, he said, well, you know, there's so much money being spent here, why do we still have this problem? I said, because we're spending the money on Band-Aids. And the Band-Aids are really important. And when somebody has nowhere to go, having the shelters, having the villages, having these services is important. But we need to be addressing the underlying causes, and we need to be helping keep people from falling through the cracks here. And we need to bring the solidarity that we had, that so many people came together to stand with our neighbors at Northlake, to encompass all of our vulnerable neighbors. And I'm looking forward to seeing the work that this council does in the remainder of your time, and that the new council does in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina, just a second. Let me call some of the speakers after you. Following Gina will be Zoshi Makovich, and then Megan.
Murphy.
It says, I say Murphy, though. Is it she, Megan? Okay, Megan Murphy. I didn't see your last name. You'll follow, Megan. Thank you, Gina.
Hello, everyone on the council. Thank you for being here today. My name is Gina Owens. As a comrade to Devon Silvernail, who you heard from earlier, we are Seattle Renters Commissioners, and we submitted the letter that Shama Sawant so eloquently has supported us in. Thank you for that. But today, I am here not as a Seattle Renters Commissioner. I am here as an individual, and I have a question I want to put forth to each one of you members on the city council. The question is, the funding that is allocated for housing services, someone left their glasses up here, by the way. someone left their glasses up here, by the way, for housing services, how much of it actually goes to admin? And how much of it could actually be reconsidered? We really need funding to be available so that this moratorium that we are pushing for can work. And as far as I know and can see, I have actually lived homeless in Seattle for two and a half years, so I know personal experience. I now am a Renters Commissioner, and I fight for the rights of people because I know how much it hurts people having to survive day to day. So my question to you about how much it is going to admin is an honest question, and I would ask all of you to reconsider the homelessness program financing and make sure that the funds are reallocated in a way that is humanely possible for us to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zoshi Makovich, and I'm the Political Director for Washington Community Action Network. We're in support of this moratorium, and I just wanted to share just a couple of things that I think is helpful. So one, in San Francisco, there are limitations on evictions during the school year when you're looking at families, employees of the school district, and childcare workers, right? So the idea that you can't limit evictions during a specific time of year, I mean, that happens in the U.S. In New York City, while this is informal, the last two weeks of the year, there's really no evictions. And it's because the marshals just don't want to evict people during the holidays. And so, and that's been going on for like 40 years. And so I think there's definitely room for the City Council to think through, how can we figure out how to make sure that we're not pushing people into homelessness in particular during like one of the most dangerous times to be homeless? And I think the other thing to highlight is even with this moratorium, tenants will still have to owe that rent. They will still pay those late fees. They still risk garnishment. So it's not like there's not a bunch of incentives to be paying rent when you can. This is just about making sure that people don't die. And I will say that, you know, when I was working on the Women's Commission Report on Evictions and going through all of those court records and the medical examiner's death records, it's incredible, like, there are people who died. I mean, one person that's going to stay in my mind forever is a woman who was evicted. And she was about, she was in her 50s, and she died of hypertension on the street. Like, that, someone who in their 50s should not be dying of hypertension. And so, yeah, I just think this is something that needs to be seriously considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Megan, our last two speakers will be Michael Foster, then Christopher Anderson. Michael and Christopher.
Thanks for letting me speak. I was walking across the crosswalk down by the Starbucks on First Avenue, and it was dark. And this woman, the light was going 20, 19, 80, or however long it is. And she was walking on a walker really slow. There was no way she was going to make it across in time. So I thought, well, I should probably walk with her because one of her feet was going like this. And she said she had edema, and she was homeless. And she finds places to crash sometimes. And I thought, oh, my gosh. So once she was in Starbucks and she pulled out a water bottle to be able to sit there, I called Nicholsville. I'd never done it before. And they gave me a phone number for someone to call because I wanted to go in and tell her where she could go or like somehow scrape up money to spot her in Uber to just say, "Here, go there, and you can sleep." And we were trying to get 14 tiny house villages. Instead, we only got 13. And we were talking about homelessness. Since we developed a three-tiered system here like three years ago or four, so once we like get that system in place of who can be a tiny encampment, then somehow, you know, you can go from being homeless to having support systems. And I think it's important because we have so much technology. And I think human beings should come before the technology. In the book, The Socialist Manifesto, what if our society was organized around people's needs rather than like trinkets or flea markets on Amazon where things are made by people not getting enough money to survive and like slave life? What if everything was organized in such a way that human needs are at the top of the list? And, you know, I don't even want to say put the horse before the cart because we don't even have to do that to horses anymore. I mean, really? I mean, we could even have like so much potential that we're not using. So I only hope with all the technology we have that the need for humans, and tiny houses are so inexpensive and easy to organize. So please, don't evict in the winter because it's inhumane.
Thank you, Megan. So following Michael is Christopher.
Thank you for having this hearing. Public comment? I wanted to see the hands of all the people who helped out with the Northlake Tiny House Village. Yeah, if you live there, if you helped stop that today. But I don't want to thank you. I want to thank @MayorJenny for pulling the biggest, stupidest Trump move anybody could pull in the holiday season. I didn't even know there was a Northlake Village until this happened. I live just up the street. So I'm thrilled and I'm grateful to the mayor for being such an idiot so that I got to meet some of my neighbors and see the amazing work that they're doing. And there were events in London and New York and other cities around the world this weekend where people slept out in the streets, slept out in Times Square. And, you know, what was it? Will Smith was reading a bedtime story to people so that they could experience what it would be like to sleep on the street. Not simulating homelessness because everybody had keys in their pockets and everybody could get up and go take a shower in the morning, but just to raise money and raise awareness on this issue. 2,000 people didn't want that to happen, and so it didn't happen. And so all the people that you heard speaking today, I want you to imagine if they had been evicted this morning. I want you to play this in rewind right now with the good citizens who are organizing on behalf of Seattle residents. We're standing here without a place to be or arrested. Or if I was arrested with them. I want you to think about whether you would be willing to be arrested with them. And I want you to think about whether you would be willing to break those locks,
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
break down those doors and throw people out in the middle of winter. Because if you wouldn't, then you've got to make this happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Christopher Anderson with SHARE. So my comments are off the cuff. I didn't plan my words as I normally do when I'm before you. So know that this is heartfelt, and I'm obviously a little bit nervous. But I get to look you in the eye this time instead of read a piece of paper, and that's a little bit more comfortable. So I became homeless in February. February 1st was my first night homeless. And I want to talk a little about hypothermia because that's really what the issue is at hand here. I shivered on the bench in the park. I did that for a couple of hours after having been at one place, and then another place, and then another place because I was shuffled off and didn't know whether or not the place that I was actually at was going to be the place that I was going to fall asleep and get some rest. It gets to the point where you're completely drained. You're shivering all the time, and you start to fall asleep. And that's actually a symptom of dying of hypothermia. So as I sit there on the bench, seriously not knowing whether my exhaustion is a result of my day or the condition that I'm living in. Okay? So I want to thank you guys for considering this. I want to thank the Recovery Cafe for helping me bridge the gap between where I was at and where I ended up, which was SHARE. And SHARE gives me the agency to stand before you today because I had a lot of shame sitting on that bench. I had a lot of shame. This is obvious, as the gentleman said earlier. This is Dickensian, as the woman described earlier. And having had that shame and having agency now lets me unburden myself of that shame. And I hope that you have an opportunity to make this decision correctly so you don't have to pick up that shame.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda, Paying the Bills. Please read the title.
Council Bill 119723, Appropriating Money to Pay Sarden Claims for the week of November 25th, 2018 through November 29th, 2019, and ordering the payment thereof.
To pass Council Bill 119723. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to the second, the bill passed. Any questions or comments? Please call the role on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Begshaw?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The bill passed, and Chair will sign it. Please read the first agenda item.
The report of the City Council, Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119696, relating to land use and zoning extending for six months, a moratorium established by ordinance 125764 on the finally accepting, processing, and/or approval of any application to establish a new principal or accessory unit uses or change a principal or accessory use for any site currently used as a mobile home park as defined in Section 23.84A.032, Seattle MSA Code.
Councilmember Begshaw.
Are we all the?
I think, well, I'm not until three.
I was looking at what I had on number two. Is it Councilmember Herbold? I'm guessing here. Okay. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Just want to ask the clerk, are we going to be taking public comment on this? Should I wait to speak to the merits of the bill after we hear from the public?
Well, I first want to make sure I got a few more mistakes on the dais before I got off the dais. So let me read a script that I'm supposed to read here. Okay, let me start over. The council will now open the public hearing on Council Bill 119696 relating to a moratorium extension on the mobile home, on mobile home parks. A public comment signup sheet has been available since 1:45 PM, and we do have members of the public who have signed up to speak. This public hearing will conclude once all speakers have provided their comments on this item. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes of public comment. Speakers are asked to begin their comments by identifying themselves. So at that point, I will call the first speaker. And do I have a sheet for those speakers? My apologies to my colleagues on the dais for that. Oh, right here, we have David Haynes to be our first one. Is Dave still here? Okay. So David Haynes going once, twice. He's not here. John Lombard. Is John here? Hi, John. And then, John, let me just get a few people in queue before you begin. Brent McFarland will follow John, and then Kelly MC something follows Brent. Good, John.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm John Lombard. I was the candidate in the primary to join you from District 5. I anticipate getting only one minute to speak today, so my remarks will be brief. In my campaign, the very first place that I doorbilled was the Halcyon Mobile Home Park because I believe their situation is the highest priority in all of District 5 for the council to address. The question at this stage should not be whether you should extend the moratorium on new or changed development at Halcyon or Bella B, the mobile home park next to it. Of course you should. The question should be, what are you going to do during that moratorium to provide long-term protection for the people at Halcyon? The city had a year to act during this last moratorium and did nothing. I've not heard a compelling argument why the city cannot follow the lead of Kenmore and other Western Washington jurisdictions and establish zoning specifically for mobile home parks. I urge you to do that within the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. My name is Brent McFarland, and I'm a member of Puget Sound Advocates for Retirement Action as well as a neighbor of the Halcyon community in District 5. I would second some of those comments in that we are disappointed that the City Council and mayor did not come up with a more permanent solution in the first six months of this moratorium. But I believe it does need to be extended. I would urge you to, and with whatever power you have, to come up with a permanent solution for this community. I've heard testimony from the people six months ago who live in this neighborhood. They are a community of people who would like to be able to stay there. Many of them came into that community with the understanding that they would be able to stay there once, pay for their mobile home, and stay there indefinitely. So they were misled. But now the city has some responsibility, and I believe a moral obligation to this neighborhood, to help them remain as a community and not see yet another economic eviction in this city. So let's try to be a city that doesn't let developers plan the future. We would like to see a future that includes community that's already there. Thanks.
Thank you.
So my name's Kelly McKinney. I live in District 5. And I'm guessing that's who you were referring to?
Yes, I couldn't get the after.
I support extending the moratorium on redeveloping mobile home parks. Last year, a moratorium was placed, and it was assigned to committee, but nothing was done to further address the issue. Many of the residents of Halcyon Court cannot afford to move elsewhere if Council, if Halcyon Court is redeveloped. So I echo John and Brent's comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Following Kelly is Patty Zeitlin, and then, is it Breith Kapali? Burgath Kapali, and then Betty Spiker.
Yes, my thanks to Kishana Sawant and her office and all of the council members who did vote to have us get the moratorium for a year, which ends in January. And we do need an extension for the six months. I live at Halcyon Mobile Home Park. I'm 83. I've been recovering from cancer, and the nearby hospital has been wonderful, that they've helped me so much. But if I'm taken away, if I have to face homelessness, I can't tell you what stress that is to have continuous uncertainty about the future of my home and our homes. It's left us very anxious. One homeowner had a heart attack and died when he heard, first heard that we were up for sale. And another person had a breakdown and went into the hospital because of it. You see, we were promised that we would have our homes forever, and our trust is a broken trust. We had hoped for a zoning change to a mobile home park only because it would have provided final protection for us. We don't have it, don't have it yet. One reason given for the lack of that protection in a letter from the mayor was that the showbox was saved, but the developers who lost money on their plans to develop it are going to sue, or are suing the council. I don't know if that's happened yet, but it was a threat. And that was given as a reason for why that the city couldn't support our zoning change. So I don't know what your reasons were as to why you didn't support our zoning change, but I'm asking you to please do so because what it means is, instead of the city paying, in case they get sued, we pay with our very lives, mind you. We are the ones who pay that cost. And I don't think that's fair. I think that's very unjust. So I hope that you will not only approve this moratorium, but also work toward getting us a zoning change that makes it permanently a mobile home park and that some rent control happens because our rent just went up $100. And we may be evicted because of not being able to pay the rent, even if we get whatever we need to remain a mobile home. able to pay the rent, even if we get whatever we need to remain a mobile home park.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Burgath Kapali. I'm a friend of several of the people who live in the mobile home park. I was at the hearing last year. I believe that it has been long enough to be looking at changing zoning. We have no other mobile parks in Seattle. This one needs to be saved. This is for people who are older, who also moved there thinking it was going to be a permanent home for them as they reach the end of their lives, and now they have to worry all the time. I, myself, am 73. I'm lucky. I own a home. I've lived in Seattle area all my life, and what I see right now is appalling. Rents have gone up for everyone, and people at Halcyon Park are also paying more rent. We need to work on getting this, this, what would I call it? The change, right now, not a year from now. They need to have their, their mobile home designation. They also need protection on their rent, and that is the biggest issue in Seattle. Seattle's supposed to be a humanitarian city. All I can say, living here all my life, is to say, not very humanitarian to me. We do things based on money, and I know the City Council can make a difference. That's why you're here. And I thank you and hope that you can see this. You can walk over those barriers, I know. The barriers are there. They're going to be in people that you work with, but you will do it. And thank you, Representative Sawant, for your work in this. You can all do it. Thank you.
So Betty is followed by Wes Shearer. Betty?
Well, here I am. I don't know you people, you don't know me, but I ask you, we need to live in our park. I've lived there about 14 years, you've heard it all. We're all older citizens, senior citizens, on limited incomes. It's a wonderful place to live. We're friends. We go to the hospital, take people to hospitals, shopping, all over. You've all heard this. So this time, vote with your hearts, not your heads. Forget the big bucks that people have. They want to come in and take over our property. It's a lovely place to live. Think about your grandparents, if they were kicked out in the street right now. There's no place for us to go. $2,500 a month, $3,000 a month to find an apartment, if you can find one. North Gate area is very expensive to live in. This is seven and a half acres of location. The property's rotten. It's on a, it's on a garbage dump. But big business can come in, and they can clear that because of the location. Please, councilpeople, vote for, as they say, vote with your hearts, not your heads this time. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I've been here before, thanks to Council Sawant, that I have lived there for quite a while. And I want to save our moratorium for a longer time, period of time, to protect our mobile home park. We're senior citizens, and there's enough people out there living on the streets, so why have us, as senior citizens, be with them? I hope that they can be in affordable living, and I hope our affordable living is a lot better than it is right now. But anyway, thank you for your moratorium last time, and I hope you can save our homes in our mobile home park. There's only two left, and I'd hate to see a zero come upon us. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Wes.
God bless.
Our next three speakers are Mary Kennedy, Steve Stevenson, and then Linda McCoy. Mary, Steve, and Linda. And then James DKK, you would be fourth in this group.
Hi, I'm Mary Kennedy. I'm a seven-year resident of Halcyon Mobile Home Park. One of our longtime residents was too ill to come today, but she asked me to read this to you for her. Dear City Council members and other powers that be, I am asking you today for stability, security, and long-term sustainability for the affordability of our homes and community. Please vote yes for an extended moratorium so we can secure a permanent solution for our situation. Please vote yes. Save our homes. Thank you. Eloise Mickelson, President of the Halcyon HOA. And I'd like to add my voice to that, to please extend the moratorium. Please take the vote today so we will know whether we got it or not. And please keep in mind that we do want to rezone, so we'll be thinking of that. We need the moratorium to give us time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Stevenson. I'm a owner at Halcyon Mobile Home Park. When I bought my place there, I was told by the management and everybody that they would never sell our house. And what happens? They sold it. They sold the park. This is supposed to be in a trust and all kinds of junk. We don't have the money to give hire lawyers, to go down and fight this kind of stuff. But you have some power, and the power is you can stop most of this by putting this in a zoning where they cannot do anything but have a 55 and older park there. You can do this. And if the mayor don't want you to do it, you can override her with a five to four vote. It's that simple. It's not rocket science. I ask that you get a permanent moratorium or a zoning thing that keeps this a mobile home park forever, and make them come in here and beg you to change the zoning. We don't like begging. We like to live in our house comfortably and do our own thing. And most of us, we know everybody in the park. Everybody knows everybody, and they look after everybody. I don't see that happening in the streets out here. But it does happen in this mobile home park. If you really want to do something, change the zoning. And if you can, I don't know if you can, have rent control. But if you can, put rent control on these places where we can afford to die there peacefully. That's what I bought this house for. I figure I could take, one of my things I promised my wife, I would take care of her. You know what? It's getting to the point where I don't know if I can. I'm 80 years old. I may look young and good-looking, but I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for testifying. Shama Sawant, I want to thank you, but in addition, I really want to thank you, Lisa Herbald, because when our current board was doing the individual work with councilpeople and really trying to work out strategy, you were there for us, and thank you, thank you so much. So as you may have heard or intimated, our, our mobile home park was sold. It was sold December 6th, 2019. So the game is a different game. We had an opportunity, I'm not going to shame you too much here, but I just really need to say, we had an opportunity while we were in the trust to really get our needs met, because no one owned this park. No one was, promised the park as a beneficiary. That trust was written in a real specific way, and I kept trying to tell you guys that. We needed action. It didn't happen, so now our back is against the wall. But I want to read you something from the lawyer of the new owners, and I'm reading it because I wanted to, to give you support and encouragement for a permanent rezoning solution, and give you evidence that you cannot be sued by these guys, because we've got their lawyer saying this is their intention. So here we go. This is to Michelle S. Cohen, Legal Counsel Office of the Mayor regarding Mobile Home, Halcyon Mobile Home Park, 12233 Ashworth, that's the office address. Dear Ms. Chen, I represent, and this is from Hills Clark, Martin and Peterson, P.S. here in Seattle. Sorry. Dear Ms. Chen, I represent Halcyon Mobile Home Park LLC. This is the company the buyers formed in October to take this over, the party that recently acquired the Halcyon Mobile Home Park. My client asked that I reach out to the mayor's office to inform the city of my client's intent to continue operating the Halcyon property as a mobile home park. My client is, as an experienced mobile home park operator, who owns multiple mobile home communities in Washington State. Their interest in the Halcyon property is to increase their existing mobile home community portfolio. Regards, Julie B. Hamilton, blah, blah, blah. Now, I don't have any minutes here, but I just want to say, what is at stake here? They may have, they may have made the intent to continue operating as a mobile home park, but we need protection as a 55-plus park. We need protection for the kinds of rents that were promised under the trust agreement for 36 years. This park operated for 36 years as a below market rate rent for our mobile home spaces. This is no longer the case. This is a private owner. We need some protections. We want to work with you.
Thank you.
And so, please, hopefully, we'll be meeting in the future, and we can work some of that out. So I want to, yes, vote for today. Thank you.
Thank you. So, was that Mary or Linda?
Uh, Linda.
You're Linda. So Linda, following you is James, is a DKK, I see. Is there a James here? Is that you, James? And then Yakov Sanai, and then Megan Murphy.
Hi, my name is, hello. My name is James Dick, and I actually just came here today to say that I'm fully in support of trying to continue this moratorium so that we have time to work on defending the park. And that's basically, pretty much what I had to say. I did get sort of sent by a loop on this moratorium on winter evictions. Wow, I fully support that.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Thank you. Yakov Sanai, and then Megan Murphy.
Hi, my name is Yakov Sanai. I am the owner of Bella B. Mobile Home Park, which is right next to Halcyon. I've been owner for four years, and my park was never for sale, and it's not for sale right now. And what I've seen happening in the last year is the City Council is not giving people what they want, you know, solution. You know, those two properties are deteriorating by the month. Mobile homes are beyond repair, and they have to be demolished, moved out. This, at least my property, is getting more and more expensive to maintain. So what I propose as an owner, that the city will consider, then, that if, in the future, a developer wants to demolish a mobile home park, he would be obligated to provide for each tenant who moved out to come back, to get a brand-new unit with the same rent that they used to be in the park. Okay? That's a solution, you know? And I sympathize with all of you. You know, those parks will not last forever, but I'm, I'm the owner, and even if you don't pass this thing, I will do it for my tenant. But, you know, it's, stop talking. You're talking too much. You're doing, doing nothing. You do nothing. You just seems like you want to get vote, and you get popular, you know, by, by the day. Sit down, and they have a solution. What do you do all day? These people want solution.
Your time's up, sir.
One year.
Thank you.
And you've done nothing, nothing. If you want to talk to me.
So your time is up.
If you want to talk to me, you can call me.
Okay. Megan will be followed by Susan Ward.
Thanks for letting me speak. I feel like, I think a lot of people watching this feel like we've gotten to know the people at Halcyon Park, and we know they have grandkids and kids, and that they worked really, really hard, and were told one thing, and then had that trust reversed. And I think we all know with, first of all, our heart, which ultimately is better for the head, that it is wrong to do this to people, to put big real estate ahead of the needs of people, because it'll work out better in the end for everybody if we put people's needs ahead of big real estate, because they will always have enough money to pay the rent and/or their mortgages and food. The people at Halcyon, to see them being placed in a vulnerable position doesn't make sense to me either way. So that's why I think it's important, because, you know, a lot of people in Seattle, this isn't just an isolated incident. I think, you know, a lot of people that feel like they're paying exorbitant rents need to organize and push that we get given the chance to pay rents which are within, you know, the range of the income we make. Thirty percent of whatever we make is the formula. And I think if everybody did this, it wouldn't be such, such an unusual situation to overturn big developers coming in predatory, sensing that they have easy prey and they can make a killing financially. Instead of doing that, why not think of it a different, in a whole new context, putting human services first and the needs of humans? And then I think it will, I think it would ultimately interiorly make, be low-line fruit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Her last two speakers are Susan Ward and then Sue Lenander. Susan and Sue.
Good afternoon. My name's Susan Ward. The good news is that the Halcyon Mobile Home Court was sold to a court operator. But the bad news is that it shouldn't have been sold at all. The residents, the residents of Halcyon were assured on buying their homes that the court would never be sold, that it would be held in trust, that the rent increases for their lots would be controlled, that they could age in place. All of the 76 residents of Halcyon community are elderly, most live on limited fixed incomes. Many invested their life savings in these homes, the only ones that they could afford. This is a true, long-established, low-income housing, and it is a true community of people who know and take care of each other. If its new owners sell the land for development, these residents will be homeless. Halcyon and its neighbor, Bella B., are the last two mobile home courts in the city of Seattle. Their homes would be worthless if it was sold to a developer. Extending the moratorium long-term, not just a year, is essential to keeping these residents in housing. Additionally, the council must find a way to institute mobile home zoning. Other cities have done it, not, not just Kenmore. There have been about six in the Northwest, in the Washington area, and it's held up in court. Additionally, it must, the city must provide rental increase subsidies to those who need them. This is cheaper than any other housing the city could provide if these people become homeless. They would be on a waiting list for shag or tiny houses. If their, their rents are subsidized, if it goes up, their community will be kept intact. We have a homelessness crisis. The best way to end homelessness is to prevent it from happening in the first place. Thank you.
I did have one other speaker after Sue. That'd be Amy Madden.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sue Lenander. I'm here to speak. I just really assume that you're going to do the right thing for these folks that are living in this mobile home community. And I guess my biggest reason to be here today is I'm a medical assistant at Seattle Children's, and I'm not working today because I'm here to be an advocate for the families that I see in our clinic every day. I really can't believe that we have to be spending the time and resources to even be talking about not evicting families in the winter, and that people who have homes that we're considering taking their homes away from them. I wish that you could come to our clinic and meet some of these children. I wish that you could come to our clinic and meet some of these children that are homeless. They're like your children, though. They tell me about how much they love unicorns, and they want to get some, you know, football for Christmas, and that they live in the backseat of a car, but their mom said that someday they're going to have a house again. So, I just feel like it's a waste of our time and our resources to even be having these discussions, and I assume that you're all going to lead with your hearts. And we live in one of the most wealthy cities in the world, and there's no reason that we should have people who are homeless. So, thanks for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Madden, and I just want to speak to a few of my friends who live in the Halcyon Mobile Home Park, especially my friend Patty Zaitlin, who I have known for 20 years. Patty gave her entire life, devoted her entire life to working for children. She is one of the people that developed the Head Start program in our country, and we've all benefited from her work and her investment in children. And many of the people in this community worked their whole lives and saved up money that they then invested in these homes. And if they were to lose their homes, they will lose this investment. They will lose their retirement. I think we need to be treating our elders better. We need to make sure that we are providing housing for the people who are most vulnerable in our communities, and we need to honor the people that have invested so much time and so much work into our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the speakers I have on Council Bill 119696. Are there any speakers who I overlooked on the list or I didn't give an opportunity to speak? Hearing then, I will close the public comments speaker portion of this public hearing and close the public hearing itself. And it's been read into the record, I believe. So, Councilmember Herbold, will you address the bill?
I will. Thank you so much. As we have heard, this legislation would extend for six months a moratorium at the Halcyon Mobile Home Park. Halcyon is home to 78 senior households. Many of those folks are low-income residents, disabled residents. This, this mobile home park and the sister mobile home park next door is two, one of two, or two of only two, I should say, two of only two mobile home parks in Seattle, whereas in the state of Washington, we have over 1,400. That is sort of the basis for the interest in permanent zoning to protect this, what is, to the residents, a precious housing resource. I found out, really by chance, that the intended underlying regulations that the council had expected when we passed the last moratorium wasn't moving forward. The residents of Halcyon Mobile Home Park were doing their due diligence and meeting with council members and making sure that council members were going to be voting yes when we received the zoning legislation. And they were under the impression at the time that the zoning legislation was moving forward. Since I was a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee that would first hear this legislation, I checked in to find out what the status was and found out at that time that there hadn't been a proposal yet developed. That was, I think, in early, early summer, back in June. We subsequently, during the budget process, checked in with the mayor's office and confirmed that they did have, the mayor's office did have, in their third-quarter work plan, an intent to draft legislation, determine a preferred policy approach, and begin CIPA review with an expectation that they would be transmitting legislation in the fourth quarter of 2019. I have checked in with the mayor's office and expressed my hope that as soon as the council passes this legislation, that we all get on the same page, because I do not want to be in the same position come May of 2020 of needing to, needing to take this action again. And I really apologize on behalf of the city for the uncertainty that folks have been having to live under. It is, it's unfortunate and is something that could definitely be avoided. Since, since our last action on this, there has been a legal decision that allows us to consider another alternative in addition to passing zoning legislation. It's uncertain how much this other alternative would benefit the residents of Halcyon, but I think it's worth a conversation. We have a new path that is clear for Washington State, including the city of Seattle, if we want to act to enhance protections for our two remaining manufactured housing parks. We can now enact a renewed right of first refusal law for, to allow the tenants to have a legal right to be the first offerers to purchase the park if it comes up for sale again. Other states have such a law, and we have just, because of a recent court case, cleared the way to be able to enact something like this here locally in Seattle. I have found that nonprofits such as the resident-owned communities of USA, Rock USA, serve as a low-cost bank to park tenants who want to organize to make a matching buyout offer. And we have some folks in our city of Seattle family who have family members that are actually organizing in other states, in other parts of the country, to actually take advantage of this. So, it would be interesting to bring some of that expertise here to Seattle to talk about how we could maybe look at that as well. So, the last, last point I'd like to make is we have heard via the mayor's office that there is a new purchaser. We have received a written expectation that they are going to continue operating this park as a mobile home park, and I think the action that we are about to take today will further bustress that intent. So, thank you so much for coming down today.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, President Harrell, and I really appreciate everybody who came to testify on this issue, both the residents themselves, because you're directly facing this situation, but also the people who stand with you, Amy Madden, and so many community allies. You have so much support. It is really unfortunate that we are in this situation, and first of all, I wanted to acknowledge, as one of you said, it's both about protecting your mobile homes and also protecting you as renters. And I really appreciate those of you who said this is actually linked to the overall question of controlling rents in the city, because you are, you are part of the community that is impacted by the fact that rents are no longer affordable, even though you are owners of your mobile homes. So, as Councilmember Herbold was saying, last February, this council unanimously passed the ordinance which placed a one-year moratorium on rezoning this property to stop the immediate threat. And it was, you know, an honor for my office to be working closely with you, the Tenant Union of Washington State, the Association of Manufactured Homeowners, and other community supporters, that we came together to make that happen. The ordinance established a work program for offices under the mayor's control, you know, remember the department's report to the mayor's office, so the mayor is responsible for whether or not council-guided action happens or not, because she is the elected representative there. The ordinance also established a work program for offices under the mayor's control to develop proposed legislations for the council's consideration and conduct any required environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act. And, you know, Councilmember Herbold was mentioning these. Those regulations could include land use regulations that would permanently protect residents of mobile home parks who suffer from housing insecurity. Unfortunately, and unfortunately, this is not a surprise to us, to me, to my office, I mean, when I say else, I mean my office. Unfortunately, the mayor has not cooperated in this process, and those studies are not yet done. This is not, this is not because they are inept or they forgot. It's a political act. When a study is done or when a study is not done, it's a political decision that's made. Clearly, they are making a point that you're not important enough. You're not wealthy real estate owner, so you're not a priority. And so, this is a political question. And so, we do need to extend this temporary moratorium, but the main thing we need coming out of this is to renew our call on the mayor to do the right thing by mobile, mobile home park residents. And as you all said, we, you know, we've just learned that the Halcyon sale has gone through, but to a different owner from the one that was interested last year. So, I just wanted to assure you, my office will continue to stand with you and, you know, but more specifically, organize with you, your homeowners association. So, we need to make sure we do that immediately. We should, I mean, we need to put pressure on the mayor, but we also need to demand that the new owner sits down with your homeowners association and comes to an enforceable agreement that will allow you to stay at Halcyon with affordability. It's, it's allowing the mobile home park to remain with affordability. We want to be very clear, and we want to demand that from the new owner. But I just, in closing, I just wanted to say, this is, this is a political struggle to make this pressure come to fruition, both on the mayor's end and now on the owner's end. That will require us to continue to get organized, and you have tremendous support, but we need to bring that into action. And last, but not least, for those of you who said, vote with your hearts, not your heads, let me say, if you're trying to do the right thing in the context of inequality, the hearts and heads should go in the right way, I mean, in the same way. It should not be disconnected. So, hearts and heads should indicate that we should keep our most vulnerable people in their homes.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Thank you for those comments. So, public comment is over, sir. And if you continue to speak, you're going to be held disruptive, and I'm going to hold you disruptive, which means I have to have you removed, sir. Thank you. So, are there any further comments or questions that we have on this bill? If not, I'll move it. I'll move to pass Council Bill 119696. Is there a second?
Second.
So, moved in second. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Begshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
Bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please call the next, please read the next agenda item into the record.
Agenda item two, Resolution 31920, adopting general rules and procedures of the Seattle City Council superseding Resolutions 31806 and 31886.
Okay, just one moment. This is an item I'll present to all of you. And sure, this resolution adopts Attachment One to the resolution, which is our general rules and procedures of the Seattle City Council. A little bit about the process we used to develop these rules. About every year, the council rules are reviewed by many folks, and I want to thank those folks, the City Clerk Monica Martinez Simmons, and the Deputy Clerks Amelia Sanchez and Jody Schwinn, who I mentioned earlier today, Central Staff Director Kirsten Aristott, Deputy City Attorney John Shockett, and Assistant Attorneys Jeff Slaton and Gary Smith, our co-revisor Brander Isleb, and many others on my staff, just trying to get an idea of what makes sense during the course of the year. We also send drafts and seek comments from the Municipal League and the ACLU and other organizations that have a vested interest in what we try to do and make sure that our rules and how we conduct our business is aligned with values of transparency and fairness and openness. And so, through that process, we have our annual review. Many of these changes in this particular draft are just technical cleanups, but more substantively, we did have some parliamentary procedural changes and rules for membership and in attendance. And one of those, for example, deal with when there's a council vacancy, and it has failed how external committees and standing committees sort of work together, making sure that newly, the new council member assumes all of those duties. So, you've had several circulations of this, and I want to thank all of you for your comments. And I also appreciate when some of you are reading this, you've taken the time to get the history of some of the changes and why we do what we do. So, and again, this is a work in progress, so in years to come, I'm sure it will continue to improve. So, having said that, is there any questions, comments, or concerns on the adopted council rules as proposed? Councilmember Peterson.
I just wanted to thank everybody for working on these. I came in late to this process, and we will have three new council members joining us soon. I know traditionally, these rules are updated sometimes just every two years. However, I sort of want to plant a seed that I know the three new members coming in may want to look at these again and, you know, see how things go the first few months with certain things. So, I just want to plant that seed to be flexible, to see if we want to explore some of the nuances later with the newer members. Thank you.
Very good. Duly noted. Any other comments or concerns? Councilmember O'Brien.
Just a comment, just that this would shift some of the things that has been commonplace for me for the last 10 years, and I think they're fairly big shifts. And so, just to make sure that the public's aware, the rule that only designated members of a committee could vote and could participate only by invitation of the chair, and those are pretty big shifts. And I'm happy to support this, but Councilmember Peterson, I think your points are well-taken, that this is a major shift, and I think council members and the public will want to understand how that plays out. And obviously, if the council needs to change those again, I hope they would consider figuring a path that navigates that.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? What I would suggest is, and I appreciate your, your comments, I may write in and give some comments if you start messing around with these rules again, but in all seriousness, I'm really proud the way that even council members prior to this council, that we do look at how we can improve things. I think we always try to align ourselves with transparency and openness. The issues have gotten a little more complex as case history has developed on the Open Public Meetings Act, and there's been allegations made and concerns made in the state legislature. They weigh in on these things. And so, I think what, through the clerk's office and the law department, we really worked feverishly to try to make sure that everything we do is aligned with the spirit and the letter of the Open Public Meetings Act and fair to all council members. So, you know, I could say wholeheartedly and truthfully that all of these changes were made in that spirit, and I continue to look at it. Of course, you learn from mistakes made, and I'm sure a new council will look at some of the things we could have improved in the last couple of years and even improve on it anymore. So, I think that's, your point's well-taken. I saw that reached. Do you want to say so? I saw that reach, Councilmember O'Brien. Councilmember O'Brien?
Council President Harrell, your peripheral vision is still outstanding.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're credit on that. I appreciate the comments, and I think the complexity around the Open Public Meetings Act and various rules that we're trying to comply with have necessitated these conversations. I think one of the things that I would expect in the future, because I would say generally we encourage each other to show up at committees to have the more in-depth conversation, to work on policies before they come to the full council, and I think some of these rules will make that more difficult. And so, those conversations will may shift to the full council, which will just change the nature of these meetings. And not to say that one's a better way or a worse way of doing it, but I think it'll be a shift, and that's just something for folks to be aware of.
Very good. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Just a clarification from me. I appreciate Councilmember O'Brien raising what some of these changes are, because I think they are going to be a significant culture shift, not just for the council, but for members of the public who are used to working with the council in a certain way to accomplish its objectives. So, the concept of not being able to recruit a council member who is not a member of the committee to attend, to impact the outcome of the vote of the committee, that's a big change. And it's a change that we, that we need to make, and I support making. For purposes of clarification, though, I remembered that one version of the rules talked about the ability of the chair to invite participation of noncommittee members, and I understand that that exists for purposes of voting, but there was some question of whether or not we would require an invitation for somebody who wasn't, for a noncommittee member who wasn't intending to vote, but was only intending to participate in a discussion. Does that still require the invitation from the committee chair? And committee chair or the vice chair?
Yes, from the committee chair or vice chair.
Even, even with, for no voting? Okay, all right. And then, also, just again, for the viewing public, I think a significant change that has been made is we now have a quorum of three. Councilmember O'Brien alluded to that, but that, what that means is when council members So it's going to require us being more nimble and also fulfilling our commitments on a regular basis to attend the committee meetings that we're responsible for attending, but it also requires the chairs to work very closely with the members of that committee to ensure that they are scheduling meetings at times that they can actually attend those meetings.
Correct. Thanks for that clarification. I just have to say openly, when looking at these rules, I just cannot perceive a situation where a council member requests to be present in a meeting and a chair would deny their presence. I just can't imagine that in the city that we live in. So I'm hopeful that that never happens. I think, I just, I don't think that's a likely possibility, I'll put it that way. So, anyway, thanks for those comments.
I might say no.
Oh, no. Thanks for those comments, Councilmember Herbl. Any other questions on the council rules that we've never had debate on for 10 years, and now we seem to have a debate on? Okay, we're good?
And we would like to point out, we're on item number two, and it's 355.
And it's 355.
Thank you.
It's 355.
And we, I do have to propose an amendment, and so...
My lord.
So I will do that. I will amend this.
God, it's today, Council President.
Okay, sometime today. Okay, what am I amending here? Let's see here.
He wants me to...
Just one moment. There's a lot of moving parts here.
We could elect a new council president today while we're at it.
Let me out here. I'm amending item number two, but what am I doing? What is the amendment? Is it an attachment? I can't recall what it is. Okay, I'm going to amend, I'm going to, attachment number one is at section seven, it's presented on amendment one. And what is the substance of that? I just can't recall. Is that the external media? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm going to move, I'm going to amend it by presenting amendment number one, which is attachment number one, section seven, which just allows what I described this morning, which is on the external committees, that a new council member would assume the external committees as they would the standing committees. It could be changed, but it defaults to that, and that makes sense as we move forward. Is there, please, no questions or comments, because I couldn't remember what the amendment, but we had some discussion about that. Any questions or comments?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And with that, I will move to adopt Resolution 31920 as amended. Any questions or comments? Those in favor of adopting 312, 31920 as amended, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted as amended, and the Chair will sign it.
Nice.
Okay, let's go to the next agenda item.
You have an amendment, my amendment on number three.
Agenda item three, Council Bill 119719 relating to city employment authorizing execution of collective bargaining agreements.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you, and I have an amendment.
And there's an amendment to this one? So let's describe what it is, and then go ahead and describe the amendment, and we'll move the amendment.
So this legislation is proposed by our Seattle Department of Human Resources. It's Council Bill 119719 that would authorize the execution of 16 collective bargaining agreements between the City of Seattle and the Coalition of City Unions, also known simply as the Coalition. The collective bargaining agreements would cover a three-year period from January 1st, 2019, so it's retroactive a year, through December 31st, 2021, and would affect over 5,500 regularly appointed city employees in 25 city departments. And it would also authorize a memorandum of understanding between the City and the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers District Lodge 160, Local 289, to establish an auto mechanic specialized class series retroactive to February 2018.
Very good. And your amendment is a new section 18, correct?
Correct. It would amend this bill, 119719, version D1, to add authority for the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Seattle and our firefighters, Local 27.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote just on the amendment, the new section 18. Actually, it's a new attachment, 17, if I'm not mistaken. So, but, I'm sorry? Yeah. Okay, any questions on the amendment? Just the amendment? All those, it needs to be seconded.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It is amended by adding a new section 18. And any more comments on the bill itself, Councilmember Bagshaw?
No.
Okay, any questions or comments on the amended bill? We're good? Okay, please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 119719 as amended.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it.
Great, thank you.
Please read the next agenda item.
Agenda item four, Council Bill 119718 relating to city employment authorizing execution of collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. This is Local 77 ordinance. The legislation would authorize the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union Number 77, Material Controllers Unit and the Apprenticeship Coordinators Unit. The collective bargaining agreement would cover a four-year period from January 1st, 2019, again, retroactive, through December 31st, 2022. It would affect 10 regularly appointed employees at Seattle City Light, and it would also authorize a memorandum of agreement between the City and Local 77, information technology professionals to establish wage rates for the telecom system installers, who are covered by a separate agreement for Local 77. And there are no amendments.
Very good. Any questions on this bill? Then I'll move it. I'll move Council Bill 119718. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed.
Bill passes, and Chair will sign it.
Great, thank you.
Please read the next agenda item.
Agenda item five, Council Bill 119714 relating to city employment providing salary increases for 2019, 2020, 2021 for certain nonrepresented city job titles.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. This legislation would authorize salary increases, again, one year retroactive, and 2020 and 2021, for certain city job titles that are not represented by a labor organization. The increases would impact approximately 1,200 nonrepresented employees and would be consistent with the wage increases in agreements between the City and the Coalition. And as we will talk about in another moment, historically, the City has provided the same wage increases, benefits, and other conditions of employment to nonrepresented city employees as to the Coalition members, and we recommend that this pass.
Very good. Now, on this one, isn't there a table that needs to be amended on this one?
I think that's the next one.
There's not, that's the next one?
Item six.
Okay, that's number six. I had it written as number five. Okay, very good.
So did I, initially.
Okay, so this one doesn't need to be amended. Any questions or comments on this bill? Then I'll move to pass Council Bill 119714. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it. Please read item number six.
Agenda item six, Council Bill 119713 relating to city employment to be known as the pay zone ordinance.
Great.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce it again, and then I have an amendment to it. This legislation would adjust the pay zone structures for 2019 and 2020 for certain discretionary pay programs at the City. The adjustments are consistent with the City's historical practice of adjusting discretionary pay zone structures, consistent with wage increases in agreements between the City and the Coalition.
Very good. And on this one, we need to amend it by...
Correct.
...the Strategic Advisor position.
Right, and if you would allow me, Council President, I would like to amend Council Bill 119713, version D2A, to add Strategic Advisor Legislative to the list of titles in the Legislative Department.
Chair, second.
Second.
Very good. We're just voting on the amendment right now. Those in favor of the amendment, which basically is a section five table describing the positions that Councilmember Bagshaw just articulated. Any questions or comments? All those in favor on the amendment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other comments on the bill? We're good?
I have none.
Okay. I will move to pass Council Bill 119713 as amended.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended?
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number seven. You can read the short title, please.
Council Bill 119715 relating to compensation and benefits for certain city employees.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. This legislation would authorize changes to pay benefits and working conditions for certain job titles that are enumerated within this ordinance. The changes would be consistent with similar provisions and agreements between the City and the Coalition, as we've described earlier.
Very good. Any questions or comments? I'll move to pass Council Bill 119715. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it. Please read the next agenda item, the short title.
Agenda item eight, Council Bill 119717 relating to city employment.
Thank you. This item would amend our Seattle Municipal Code to harmonize the City's paid and unpaid leave benefits with the Washington State Paid Family and Medical Leave Program, and to provide additional enhancements. I want to say thank you in particular, Councilmember Gonzalez, for all your work on this.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Excuse me. Okay, I'll move to pass Council Bill 119717.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number nine.
Agenda item nine, Council Bill 119722, amending ordinance 125724, which adopted the 2019 budget.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
So I have not much more to add on this item, other than the title, that we have a number of, again, the unions belonging to the collective bargaining agreements, they expired on December 31st of 2018, and there is a long list here of items and changes to the various departments. It's around 12 pages of these, and we recommend that this ordinance pass.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Peterson.
Since, again, since I'm new to this process, as I understand it, this council bill will be paying for the contracts that we just approved, and I didn't know for council members who aren't on the LRPC or for the general public, just a, you know, a couple of background statements, if anybody could provide in terms of the process that you go through with LRPC, and then also, do you, is there concurrence that you believe these budgetary allocations are sustainable?
Well, I can tell...
Over time.
I can tell you that, Councilmember Peterson, thank you for asking those questions. We've worked very hard with the Budget Office. The Budget Office set aside money for the last number of years to be able to pay for these.
Okay.
And there's no question in my mind that the money was there on the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Would any other, Councilmembers would like to comment on the question at least, posed by Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Sure. I'm happy to talk about the Labor Relations Policy Committee process. So that's a committee of five council members, and includes myself, council members Bagshaw, Council President Harrell, Theresa Muscata, and Mike O'Brien. And as you heard, some of the representatives from the City Coalition testified during public testimony earlier this afternoon, both of them mentioned that this has been a little bit over a year-long process. And so I believe that we have, in the course of setting the parameters for labor negotiations with the City Coalition members and the Firefighters Union, which is not a member of the City Coalition, but nonetheless subject to labor negotiations, that those negotiations and the parameters that we set, that we are getting set to vote on the actual fiscal bill for, are all in compliance with the Labor Relations Policy Committee parameters, and that we are acting consistent with the Seattle Municipal Code that sets the standards and regulations around how we engage with our labor union. So I'm pretty comfortable that we've complied with our statutory obligations.
Ditto. Any other comments or questions? Thanks for the question, Councilmember Peterson. If not, I will move to pass Council Bill 119722.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes, and the Chair will sign it. Please read the next agenda item.
Agenda item 10, Clerk File 314442, CL Information Technology Department request
Agenda item 10, Clerk File 314442, CL Information Technology Department request for a six-month extension for the filing of a surveillance impact report due on March 1st, 2020.
Okay, so this is a clerk file of a memo. I'll address the issue. This is a memo from the executive requesting a six-month extension for completing the remaining SIRs, which stands for Surveillance Impact Report, and the extension is from March 1st, its original due date, 2020, to September 1st, 2020, and we sort of anticipated, given the magnitude of the work done in our privacy protection efforts, that an extension might be a possibility. In our older ordinance, we described sort of how the due date and how a request for an extension would sort of take place, and basically, the department, because of a lot of the work they did for the first two SIRs, which requires a lot of community involvement, a lot of interaction with the ACLU and other organizations, looking in protecting privacy interests, looking at department needs for their technology, et cetera, working with members of the community, it takes a while. So, we thought it would make sense to extend the date to make sure that what work is done thoroughly, and to the satisfaction of particularly the privacy advocates, and still trying to meet the needs of government as they use technology reasonably. So, we think this extension is reasonable, and I'm confident that this good work will continue to be done, and done the right way. Any questions or comments on this clerk file? Hearing none. I move to approve and file Clerk File 314442. Is there a second? There is a second. Those in favor of approving and filing Clerk File, the clerk file, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed vote no. The motion carries and Clerk File is approved and filed. Please read the next agenda item.
The report is the Governance Equity and Technology Committee, Agenda Item 11, Council Bill 119707 relating to the City Light Department.
Okay, now I'm gonna channel in my Councilmember Musqueta spirit on this as a City Light matter, and-
Have to be peppier.
Have to be peppier. Okay, so this council bill authorizes the General Manager and CEO, Chief Executive Officer of City Light, to accept the modification of an existing easement granted by the city county, and sort of perfunctory to a large extent, in 1958, that was just a phenomenal year, by the way, the year some people were born, City Light obtained an easement from the King County for an electrical distribution line at the Boeing Field in Georgetown, but since that time, the utility lines have been relocated without an adjustment to the easement, and now, King County is planning to construct a new building in that area, and it needs to revise the easement, and so that's what this legislation does, and it relinquishes the part of the old easement that's not being used, there's no cost to either party, and it revises part of the easement to reflect the present location of the distribution lines, okay? So, that's what this does. Are there any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Begshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Aitken, favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please read the next agenda item.
Agenda item 12, Resolution 31919 relating to the Technology Matching Fund Program. The committee recommends the resolution be adopted.
I'll present this item as well. Just one moment. You're stretching.
Staging a protest.
Okay, so this is a resolution which basically relates to our technology matching fund program that I described this morning. A little background on that fund, because it's really great work done by the city, I believe. It was established in 1997, and it's a program that has assisted more than 340 community organizations with $5.4 million in funding and $9 million in community matched funds, primarily to look at digital equity programs, underrepresented communities and their technology needs, and the kinds of programs are just really been incredible that have continued to do this work in looking at the digital divide. This particular resolution is asking the department to sort of try to improve the process. They're saying right now it takes potentially around six months to get the money out the door, basically, and we're asking that these communities, these organizations to, is there a way we can sort of accelerate the process? Some of these are five or $10 million, $10,000 grants, none of them exceed $50,000, so we think we want to have a very efficient and effective manner to get the money out the door, so to speak, and that's what this resolution does. I do have to make an amendment to it. I'll first ask if there's any questions on the base legislation, the base resolution. Everybody good there? I need to move to amend this Resolution 31919 by adding a new Section 4, and this is a suggestion from Councilmember Herbl that I support, and that is the CTO, the language reads, "The CTO is requested to provide the report on all approved projects by March 31st, 2020." So, we wanted a specific date by which the CTO would come back and give us the recommendations. It's been moved to second. Councilmember Herbl, do you want to speak to that?
I would love to speak to that. I'm sorry I did not have a chance to review this language when it was in draft form, and so I'm just gonna, for the record, express my hope that we're not only briefed on what the projects are by the date certain, but what the new process is. My interest was, it was really in finding out, yes, we're authorizing the executive and the CEO to go forth and create a new process by which they would, they would use that new process to identify new projects, and I would be interested to know what the new process is, since they are, these projects are no longer required to come to council for our authorization. We are relinquishing a little bit of oversight, and I wanted to get a sense of what that oversight would, what opportunities there would be for oversight in the future under the new process before new projects came forward. Nonetheless, I'm confident that folks at Seattle IT are watching and will offer to provide that information absent an amendment when the time comes. So, thank you.
Very good point, and very good catch, by the way. In my conversations with the folks at CIT, Seattle Information Technology, they've been very open and transparent, and you're absolutely right that the thought here is, let us know what you're doing, what you think makes sense, and make sure the council's involved. I must say that in 12 years, I've been sort of supervising, from a policy perspective, the technology matching grants, and I want to thank them for, and the Community Technology Advisory Board, CTAB, on their openness and the transparency on how they've gone about it, letting us know what kinds of investments they're looking at in typical year. For example, they may invest in one area of technology needs versus another area. There might be, I'll use an example, an increased level of fraud against elderly, as an example, in the internet, getting that call and asking for their social security number, things like that, and so they've been pretty open and transparent about what they're looking at, and I'm sure that that kind of transparency will continue, but you're absolutely right, Councilmember Herbl, that's what we want, because we are relinquishing some level of oversight. Okay, having said that, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the resolution as amended-
We're voting on the amendment.
Oh, we're voting on the amendment first, by the way. We're voting on the amendment first. So, I moved it, it was seconded. All those in favor, just the amendment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Any other questions on the resolution as amended? All those in favor of Resolution 31919 as amended, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, we got her on the fly there. Opposed. The ayes have it, and that resolution passes. Please read the next agenda item.
The report is the Civic Development Public Assets and Native Communities Committee, Agenda Item 13, Council Bill 119661 relating to the Seattle Parks and Recreation.
Councilmember Juarez.
Finally, I think I'll just take my time and talk a lot. There's so much I want to say at 4:19. So, Item 13, this bill authorizes acquisition of 4,264 square feet real property adjacent to Terry Pettis Park for open space and park and recreation. Terry Pettis Park is located in Eastlake, was built in 1970 to provide access to Lake Union. This acquisition would expand and create more park space in a developing urban village. Purchasing price is $70,000, and the cost of staff is 40, I'm sorry, $700,000, and the cost of staff is $40,000, totaling approximately $740,000 from the Seattle Park District budget. The committee recommends full council pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Any questions or comments on this bill? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Begshaw. President Harrell.
Aye.
Aitken, favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please read Item 14, the short title.
Agenda item 14, Council Bill 119700 relating to the Central Waterfront Project. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. This bill authorizes a funding and construction agreement between the city and the Seattle Aquarium for a new ocean pavilion. It's been about 25 years in the making to create and expand a new waterfront. This piece, an ocean pavilion, would not only provide more public space along the waterfront, but an opportunity for the city to invest in marine conservation education. We estimate a groundbreaking in 2021 with an opening celebration for the new ocean pavilion in late 2023. Total cost is $113 million, of which the city would pay $34 million, and the Seattle Aquarium Society would pay $79 million. I want to thank the Office of the Waterfront and the Aquarium Society for their leadership, and more particularly for working with local and regional tribes for their input to ensure tribal representation, not only in the planning, but also in design, and also in the architecture. It is the first, not one of the first times, this city will honor the first people, the Salish people, who live here and continue to live here and contribute to our vibrant and diverse city. This is a territorial recognition of indigenous people in this, that are in the city of Seattle, and it is a long time coming. The Civic Development Public Asset and Native Communities Committee recommends council, full council pass, Council Bill 119700.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Begshaw.
Comment, and I want to say thanks to all of you who are still here. Mark Reddington, architect, Sue from our aquarium, all of you who have done such great work. I don't know if Marshall Foster is watching, but the work that that team has done in this last week, we brought in a number of people that are going to be helping us and working on this particular project as overseers, and I'm just personally delighted that this is moving forward. As all of the people up here know, I've been working on this for 15 years. This will be one of the very first major moves that we're going to be having on our waterfront. We've got the Piers First, the waterfront park that's going to go the entire line of Alaskan Way. I'm delighted that this is happening, that the $34 million that the city is putting forward, there's money that's coming from King County and the state, and philanthropy, all the good work that our friends in the aquarium are doing to raise the additional private money. So, thank you for that, and I do want to, once again, acknowledge the ocean ethics curriculum that has been planned. I just think that's such a great opportunity for some of our local school children, in which to be engaged. So, well done, a long time coming, and it's the right thing to be doing and moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Begshaw. Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you. Also exciting, exciting to see this move forward and the next steps. Thanks for your ongoing work on this. I do want to flag a couple areas that I think it'll be important for folks to pay attention to moving forward. The, the design of the, what I would say, the signature piece there of the kind of tropical tank is really exciting to see in schematics. You guys do amazing job at schematics always, so they always look awesome, but I imagine this team will, will deliver it really well. As a tropical exhibit, I imagine there'll be a fair amount of energy to keep that water at the temperature necessary, and in the climate reality we're facing, where that energy comes from, and how much energy is used, and is there ways to minimize the amount of energy necessary through creative uses, I think, is something that I just ask folks to be aware of as this project moves closer, and I'm sure in the fundraising, people will be asking similar questions. The second thing I want to flag is just the broader question of keeping, I'm sure the proper term is with fish, but wildlife in captivity, and we spent a lot of time on elephants in my 10 years here, and I know less about sharks, but I think that they have the potential to be these big predator species, and the question about when and how and where and why we keep them in captivity is something that I imagine that future generations may be exploring, and I would hope that in the case that public opinion shifts over time, that the design of this is such that it could accommodate a multitude of, of things in it, that that would still provide some benefit to the public if the public sort of decides that certain animals are not going to be in captivity anymore.
Thanks for those comments, Councilmember O'Brien. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, we will ask for the roll call on the vote. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Begshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Aitken, favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number 15.
Agenda item 15, Appointment 1435, reappointment of Andrea C. Akita as Member Board of Park Commissioners for term to March 31st, 2022. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. I know that you're gonna read into the record the other two, Items 16 and 17, but I just want to let my colleagues know, I'm only gonna make comments on Items 15, 16, and 17, and then I believe we'll do all the other appointments, which are 14, all in one swoop. So, is that my understanding, Council President?
It is.
Okay, so I will do the first, well, I'll go one by one, but I just want to brace everybody. Let's see, this is Andrea. Andrea has experience serving on, it's Andrea Akita. Andrea has experience serving on boards and has been a valuable contributor on the park board. Her knowledge of social justice issues and affordable housing creates a fuller park board perspective. The Civic Development Public Assets and Native Communities Committee recommends full council pass Appointment 01435.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Those in favor of confirming the appointment, please vote aye.
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 Those opposed vote no. The ayes have it, and the appointment is confirmed. Please read Items 16 and 17.
Agenda item 16 and 17, Appointments 1436 and 1437, the Appointments of Deepa Sevaran and Shalana Marisa Venania Sinkam as Members, Seattle Park District Community Oversight Committee for term to March 31st, 2021. The committee recommends that these appointments be confirmed.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. Deepa is an impressive candidate for the Park District Oversight Committee. She has extensive background in research and conservation and environmental justice. She aims to address the disproportionate effect of environmental degradation on communities of color and low-income communities. Deepa envisions a bigger role for environmental justice advocacy in queer and trans activist spaces, centering voices and needs of the QTPOC, queer and transgender people of color. The committee recommends full council confirm this appointment.
Very good. So, that was 16 and 17, so we're going to vote on both of these.
I'll read 17. I can do 17 now.
Please do.
Okay. Oh, did she, you already read it. Okay, so Shalani is another appointee who would be a great addition to the Park District Oversight Committee. She has worked in various social service roles throughout her career and continues to stay engaged in leadership positions committed to equity and inclusion. She has a strong resume and will bring a strong business and operations background for a committee that will be responsible for reviewing and assessing performance measures regarding parks, services, and spending. She is well qualified for this role. The committee recommends full council confirm this appointment.
Very good. Any questions or comments on these two appointments? We're gonna vote on them collectively. Okay, all those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed vote no. The motion carries and appointments are confirmed. Let's go through, let's read 18 through 31 into the record.
Agenda items 18 through 31, Appointments 1473 through 18, excuse me, 1486, the Appointments of Katie Garo, Edward M. Lay, Sean Jackson, Brett Phillips, Donnie Stevenson, and Lindsay Pesternak-Wolpa as Members of Central Waterfront Committee for terms to December 31st, 2021, and Appointments of Emily Huberg-Jord, Ashraf Hasham, Eric R. Howard, Jerry Johnson, Gary Johnson, Jim Rowe, Michelle A. Rusk, Craig Schaefer, and Micael K. Winkler-Chin as Members of Central Waterfront Oversight Committee for term to December 30th, 2022. The committee recommends these appointments be confirmed.
Very good. Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. Agenda items 18 to 31 are for our newest committee, the Central Waterfront Oversight Committee, affectionately known as SEWOC. As you may recall, the 19-member SEWOC was established in early 2019 by Ordinance 125761. It's the first of its kind. It is comprised of five permanent positions and 14 new appointments, of which I'm presenting today. The SEWOC shall advise and provide feedback to the city and the central waterfront operating partner on the operations, maintenance, safety, and security of this public park. We had most of the members attend our SIPNA meeting last week to introduce themselves, and it was great to meet our new crew. The Office of the Waterfront spent the last year recruiting and interviewing candidates and made sure we had representation from all sectors, including environment, environmental groups, and labor. The committee recommends confirmation of the Central Waterfront Oversight Committee, items 18 to 31.
Very good. Any questions or comments on these appointees to this committee? Okay, we're gonna vote on them all collectively. So, those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed vote no. The motion carries and appointments are confirmed. Okay, please read the next agenda item into the record.
The report is the Finance Neighborhoods Committee, Agenda Item 32, Council Bill 119627 relating to historic preservation imposing controls upon the Highland Apartments. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Begshaw.
Thank you. The Highland Apartments were built 1924, located on Capitol Hill, up just a few blocks away from Broadway on the north end. The residential building is being renovated. It will include 14 units, one more than previously held, and the legislation acknowledges the designation of the Highland Apartments both as a historic landmark and imposes relevant controls and incentives. The builder came to our committee and explained what they were doing and showed some original photographs. It's a wonderful effort, and we recommend it pass.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez. O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Begshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Aitken, favor and unopposed.
Bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number 33.
Agenda item 33, Council Bill 119630 relating to historic preservation imposing controls upon the Blitz Funeral Home. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Begshaw.
Thank you. This legislation acknowledges, and you've said it was Blitz, I've heard it was Blights Funeral Home as a historic landmark, and imposes the relevant controls and incentives. The funeral home was built in 1921, is located in the north Queen Anne neighborhood, right, frankly, right next to the Nickerson Tavern, one of my favorite places, near the Fremont Bridge, and we recommend that these historic designations be imposed.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Begshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Aitken, favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and Chair will sign it. Please read agenda item 34, the short title.
Agenda item 34, Council Bill 119644 relating to the Department of Finance and Administrative Services. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you very much. In Councilmember Herbl and Councilmember Gonzalez's neighborhood, there are city-owned parcels that are located right at the base of the West Hillside. There are a number of small parcels that total, total under 2,000 square feet in area, and they're referred to by Seattle Public Utilities as snippets, and our FAS has requested authorization to sell these 17 very small plaits, are about five feet wide, they extend about 600 feet long. They don't have any immediate plans to sell, but they want to have the authorization to do so to their neighboring property owners when the opportunities arise, and we recommend providing that authorization to FAS.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Herbl.
Real quickly, for the, for the record, it is not my neighborhood, but it is my district, and the, my staff has been within the auspices of our constituent services efforts, been working with the residents for over a year to, trying to nudge these through the disposition process, so I really appreciate Councilmember Begshaw hearing this in your committee. The, these properties bisect the backyards of three separate lots, and residents are really glad to hear this is coming up for a vote, clears one of the barriers as, as it relates to authorization to purchase the property, and I look forward to continue to work with them so that they can-